Well, in March, City Council meeting, we thank you for your patience. We're so thankful that we had a scare here at City Hall with COVID and happy to be able to afford to everybody to come through there very well, so we're thankful for that. At this time, we'd like to, uh, do our invocation. It's from Reverend Anton Williams from St. John's Church, being read by Mayor Pro Tinsel, Kyle Hamon, all by our pledge of allegiance. So if you would please, join me in standing.
Please bow your heads. Almighty God, you have given us this good land as our heritage. Grant that we remember your generosity and consistently do your will. Bless this city with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, disease, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Grant that we, who come together from different backgrounds, with different ideas, still find unity. Support us in defending our liberties and give those to whom we have entrusted the authority of government, the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in this city. When times are prosperous, may our hearts be thankful, and in troubled times, do not let our trust in you fail. Through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I'll put my greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being and ever to be for all.
Thank you. Please do. Once again, we welcome everyone here tonight, but also welcome City Council members, everybody that has a safe month. And at this time, we have three consent items, item one, two, and three on your agenda. We'll take all three of those at one time unless there's something that anyone would like to comment on either of any of those items.
Make a motion to approve all three of them.
So, well, thank you, Mr. Fulbright, and thank you, Mr. Bill. Any further discussion or questions on that? All the favors say aye. If you want to vote, motion has carried. Also, council, we have one item to jump out. It's from your legislature here, Resolution 321, and I'll just ask for a motion to conclude that and do our agenda tonight. Second, Mr. Hamon, second, Mr. Bill. Any discussion? All the favors say aye. Anybody votes, motion carried. What we'll do is we'll fit it in, uh, we'll put it in right after item fifteen. Thank you. This brings us to item four on our agenda, which is comments from visitors and guests. They are public hearings tonight, so if you're here to speak on behalf of a particular item for a public hearing, you'd love to hear from me at this time. This particular item is just comments to visitors and guests who'd like to speak on behalf of yourself or your citizen group to your council regarding anything and anything that's on your mind that would certainly be helpful to the city. If you'd like to speak tonight, you'll please come forward, just state your name and address clearly for the public record, and just if you would, just please, please keep your comments brief so we can keep things moving along. This is a general comment from visitors and guests, love to hear from you at this time.
Move to close.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Bill. Second, Mr. Fulbright, all the favors say aye. Aye. Everybody votes, motion has carried. Item five is actually a continuation. We did come, uh, come on March, just long enough to continue items five and seven. So this is a public hearing to consider amendment to the Council of City Code. Mr. Williams, welcome proceeding. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council, Members of the public. Considering we call it small amendments because there's only three items on it, and they're sort of a relative scale, a smaller scale, we've been working on this, you know, for a few months now, some of these items. The first one being fencing in the city in residential districts. And the request would be to not permit resident, uh, front yard fencing in residential districts. That was recommended by the council, was reviewed by the planning board, they voted to support that amendment to remove the option for front yard fencing in residential districts. Any comments or questions about that? Uh, thank you. Uh, the next one was about some options that would be available for the larger commercial areas in specific zones, B2 highway business, general commercial, quarter commercial, general manufacturing, and exclusive manufacturing areas only. To have an option for some of the overflow or outdoor storage areas where they're permitted to use gravel instead of pavement in every case. And we would like to have this alternative because it will have some impact. It's not going to save the world, but it will be a small impact on stormwater and flood. What I provided for you all here on this image here is just, this is flooding from this year of Vanowall Creek. We lost our greenway, and now we're, now we're going to have to buy property to try to rebuild that. You haven't seen it, you need to go down and see that, see that flow of water, it's been unbelievable. Now, it's not like it's just this year. I just was looking through a council slide, and this is one of our sore line aerials that's completely lost its footing. You remember, you all have seen at least maybe three or more of those were repairs. This is all flooding. It could be climate change, it could be just a bad year, but all that's coming together to kind of create some problems for the city of Pono River. What I say is, small cumulative measures will help with flood damage. This isn't going to save the world and have some gravel, but it'll help, right? We need to do lots of little things to help and facilitate flood control. So I would ask that we have some more options for those who want to take it. And finally, the really the biggest part of this code amendment is some adjustments to planting specification. And this is, this is that buffer we were talking about. We've had a lot of discussion about expanding manufacturing adjacent to residential areas. And you've heard from some neighbors who felt like we didn't have enough in our code in place today. So this is an attempt to rectify that. And so what we would have is, when you have manufacturing or industrial uses adjacent to a residential neighborhood, we'll have shrubs or trees that grow to a height of at least twenty feet and be thirty feet deep. So that would be from the backyard, you know, from the back edge of that neighborhood, neighborhood property line, be thirty feet deep with some plantings in there. Now, I've gone through the list in the following pages of the ordinance and tried to select the plants that are non-invasive, exotics, try to remove those, and then things that are going to perform well in our community. So you'll notice we've kind of added a section for prohibited plant material. These are sort of like, we, over time, we might add to this list, but these are kind of like the bad plants, right? Things that end up, they're all over the woods, they're all in every farm field, is some of these exotic invasive, including the Bradford pear, tree of heaven, privet hedge. I know they still sell those, but it is just bad news for a little native landscape. We take those out because we are trying to encourage preservation of what's out there, right? We want to leave trees if they're in the right spot, but I don't want to have to count a tree of heaven, which is a completely weedy tree, or a colonia, in that count. So I'm going to allow myself to subtract those out of the calculation, if you will. And these other plants will do well in our community, and we probably have them all over town already. So that's what this ordinance is about.
Mr. Williams, going back to section twenty-two thirteen on the fencing.
Yes, sir.
If, if somebody wanted to put up like the traditional white picket fence, so to speak, that would not be allowed, is one of the, is correct?
Yes, sir.
What about those folks that may have that already? Let's say a storm comes through, blows a tree down, and it takes down half of their white picket fence. Are they going to be able to put that back up?
There'd be provision for some allowance for a repair.
Repair.
But we're not going to be able to issue permits for new ones. So if there's a section come down, they can repair it. But we wouldn't be, you know, if the whole thing came down, if someone took it down, and then a year later, they're like, hey, we really like the fence again, we can't go back. We'll be in that position with the ordinance today or as of today.
I mean, personally, I don't really have a problem with the traditional white picket fence. I think what we were talking about before was, you know, larger, I think what was proposed before, was it four feet?
It was gonna, uh...
Three feet.
Three feet. Well, what is it that we're saying is?
It's out, it's limited to three feet.
Correct, but we were bringing a proposal at one of the other meetings, maybe December, that was a four-foot allowance.
Yeah.
So that's, so...
And I can understand the jangly, you know, something that's maybe not as aesthetically pleasing on the, on the front of the, at the front of the home. I mean, I'm...
Yeah, the planning board spent a little time on this. We, the group was trying to remember where they've seen front yard fences. There really aren't that many in Pono River.
We should look at the Golden Rockwell painting. I mean, and we're trying to get to walkable cities and, you know, right up against the sidewalk, a little three-foot higher, a little wide piece of fence, but I'm impressed.
Well, I thought if the last meeting, we, not the last meeting, we talked about it in December, there had been a proposal that we allow six feet, and the planning board dropped it down to four feet. And we didn't really like four feet, but we, I don't, we're having a conversation about three feet.
Well, the conversation here...
What struck out is, what struck out is really...
They limit it to three feet from the highest.
Yeah, so we went from like, how many three-foot provisions and no provisions, so we got to bring back, to bring back the planning board. So the provision, the request or the comment was, well, what if, with certain conditions, I can't forget what they were now, because we've had to pass it to time, but it was a five-foot allowance. And I know the planning board reacted like, hey, that's a little too tall, but maybe four feet's reasonable. And when we brought it here back in December, I think, you know, they were kind of like, wow, do we really want front yard fences? I mean, there's, we're not a town that has so many where it's, you know, ubiquitous, it's really quite limited here, and quite just a few places, probably. But the planning board, they kind of were thinking the same way, they're like, how many do we really have, you know? Some people like the flexibility, but then, you know, we commented, there's a good comment made that there's those electronic fences, if you have, you know, animals, you want to control that, there's no ways to do it. So we're not limited like the way we were. Now, if you're in the side yard or rear, you can do fences. You know, you can have a fence taller than that, and no problem. So we do have some provisions in our ordinance, this is just for the front yard.
So you're saying like, down here, can I, an example, down here at Whitmire's, that must, one of the brick, he's going on the front. Something happens, I think he's knocked down, or somebody tears it down, he can't rebuild it.
We have, um...
And that, that is along the front side, I mean, big, big.
Yeah, that's a big fence. We have a provision about a fifty percent rule. Damage beyond fifty percent, or fifty percent of the land, I mean, you can kind of imagine what that fifty percent's going to represent when we have to analyze it in our office here, but it's kind of like a fifty percent rule. So I'll, I'll say that will probably apply if we encounter it. It'd be a really bad par rack if I could take that whole fence out where you couldn't repair it.
Where did the fifty percent come from? How many years ago, or is that something new, or?
No, it's been around, that fifty percent rule has been around for decades, you know, in the mountain performance section.
Can we change that?
Yes.
Okay. Personally, I don't think that's fair. If a man's still got fifty percent of his fence, then you ought to be able, or still got forty percent of his fence, I think they ought to be able to repair it. Now, if the whole fence wiped out, then maybe not. That's just my personal opinion.
I disagree totally. I don't want to see a fence in anybody's front yard.
Yeah, if the man already had it.
Well, we're not talking, he's, he's, he's not going to lose his fence, he's talking about, talking about new fence. Mr. Whitmire's fence will be there forever.
Well, if more than fifty percent of it got tore down, he couldn't be back. That's what I'm saying.
I think that's absolutely fair.
I don't.
Well, this, this ordinance is really pertaining to new fencing, correct?
Yes, sir. It's focused on new fencing, sure enough. We had, had some requests over the, you know, through last year. Some folks were home more, they, some people occurred to them, and it's, well, I really like a little more fencing, and some, you know, three feet is really not helpful to secure my home in the same way, but, you know, it's, the front yard fence hasn't gone too great.
See, I think the front yard fence is more, is not a security measure as much as it is a steady.
Right.
If it's maintained.
Or if it's, if it's maintained, that's the problem.
Well, sure, I think that's exactly, we used a couple months ago, some of our sister cities, all different types, just unmaintained, everything else, we just didn't want that. I think that's where this is coming from, the three foot, and always go back and counsel and look at it at the latest times. That's the guidance that we gave you several, gave you planning several months ago, so I'm not sure exactly where it's coming from there. But I mean, if it, like I say, if it does get damaged, if someone has a fence now, there's no worse than to repair it.
Yeah.
Back to the standard.
Yeah.
I hope we just move forward on that.
Okay, that, that really concludes my presentation on this amendment. Right now, I can't answer any more questions that you have.
I got the only plants. You're going to prohibit legal cypress, we got them for ourselves out here at the police department. I don't think that's...
I think we need to replace the ones in the police department, they look incredibly bad. It's, they, they, they don't prune well, and they often don't behave well in storms or other ice events. They lose branches, they fall out. They're not as bad as the Wrightwood pear, you can drive any town around this community and maybe see a Wrightwood pear, they just split like a ham.
Yeah.
All over the place, maybe just got tons of broken ones. But, but to your point, oh, let's show you a few slides here. This is some examples of damage. Cleveland's are kind of prone to winter throw, when there's ice or other kind of high wind events, they can blow right over. I've been up sixteen since that big event we had a few months ago, trees, these Cleveland cypress laying in fields all over, heading north out of, out of Pono River. This is some, some sort of depth to the Cleveland cypress here, and they're prone to that. This is, you know, the Bradford pear where they split, this is, we've all seen this. And then this is that variety of lugestrum, often called privet, and they're just, what the problem is, they're, they make a great hedge, right? People use them, but then they bury, they make berries. In the wintertime, this time of year, they're covered in berries, bird for starving for something to eat. They carry these to every woodland in North Carolina. I can, we can walk anywhere and I'll show you, those are grown, and they're from, you know, the Southeast Asian, and they're just invasive. So it's, we just need not plant on purpose.
It's obvious you study these plants. I appreciate your...
Sorry, I'm a little enthusiastic about that.
I appreciate your professional guidance.
Uh, any, any other, any other questions for Mr. Williams, for the public here? This is a public hearing, if you're here to speak on behalf of item five, which is considered amendment to the Council of City Code, just please come forward, state your name and address for the public record, we'd love to hear from you at this time.
Move to close the public hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bill.
Same.
Thank you, Mr. Fulbright, second. All the favors say aye. Anybody votes? Motion carried. Item six is ordered sixteen twenty-one, amended in the Council of City Code. Like I say, as you, as you guys all know, City Code can be amended each month, so I think we can, I appreciate the, Mr. Williams' research on this. I think we've accomplished what we've told them a couple months ago, but it's not right. We can always go back and readdress it in the present, at no time. If you have anything you want to add, six on the ordinance, six on the order.
No, sir, we do have a, a suggested motion, if you support it, that would cover some of our consistency statement, reasonableness, that sort of thing.
There is a statement, sir?
It's, within the motion to approve, there would be a statement that fits the...
There is a statement, sir.
It's at the end, it's in the, sorry, in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance. Or, big, big pardon. It's in working. It's not good, um, this.
It could be part of the motion to approve there.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the ordinance sixteen twenty-one. Any more motion for that?
I'm going to approve.
Mr. Campbell can read that.
Okay, uh, City Council, I think it's... I'm going to approve amendments to, as I find that the ordinance, the amendment is consistent with the land development plan, and that the changes will, will ensure the zoning ordinance is kept current, maintain quality of life and be controlled in development needs of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Down here, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Bill, all the favors say aye. Anybody votes? Motion has carried. Thank you. Item seven is a public hearing that has been continued on March first. It's a public hearing that is considered building ordinance amendment for Wild Creek Preserve. It's fine.
So, we've been working in this area since the fall, late fall, and considering annexations and initial zonings in places, and this is one of the situations with this track of land here, that it's still zone R twenty count because we've just annexed it in January. So through council action, the area in front, the bulk of the property, was M one conditional district with the, with that site plan that you remember in Track A. And for the portion of Track B, stopping right here, that was general, M one, which is general manufacturing, without any kind of conditions, it was, it's a district rezoning, if you will. The Fox Track, Fonley Fox and Belkoff, total about a hundred twenty acres, this was brought into the city, and this was already in the city, all that was reworked to be rezoned to M one, that was direct in January. And the part that was left out was a late request on the part of Lake Vanowall Creek Preserve to change that zoning from R twenty to M one. And that's what we're, we're considering tonight. The site is fourteen point eight acres. It's a fairly, you know, good sized track. It's mostly in the flood plain, so very little development can happen on this track of land. Part, parts of it are in the floodway, so even more restrictive. No one, you really can't touch that for anything. And so there's, there's some built-in challenges to this property to use, even no matter what the zoning is. I'll say that. No matter what the zoning is, there's going to be challenges because it's flooded, it's in a one hundred year flood plain, okay? When staff looked at it, we were, we were interested in, why does, why should this be open space? You know, we really have limitations on what can happen here. This is represented by the green line and the blue line. The blue line is actually the stream bed, you know, that's the Wild Creek, that's the floodway, that's where that water tears through there when there's a flood event. And then this is the overflow area that we have to manage for the one hundred year event. We, we get elevations, we have to go, anything that's ever built in those zones are to be elevated and, and studied for, so we don't change the floodway. We can't adversely affect the floodway. But you'll notice, there's a portion of this track of land that is not affected by the flood, more easy to use. If, if the goal is to expand manufacturing and then get an M one district, it could limit right to here, right? It could follow that line. That line's not arbitrary, that line is provided by FEMA. We map it. We, we have to go back there, it's my job is to go back here and map that land and, and locate that for people. So that's a responsibility to manage this for the benefit of the city.
How many acres is that?
About two and a half acres in the gray.
Is that the economic development here?
Well, it could be, you could develop on that, sure enough. Now, you know, it, it wouldn't, right now, the land combines this way, right? We've got the whole track of land, and right now, it's linked this way, but actually, the Wild Creek Preserve folks, represented by Alicia tonight, they control to the side here, so it could come this way, you know? So there's a way to develop that.
Could be used as retention.
Could be retention for the rest of the site, even the neighboring sites. So there's, there's things you can do. And actually, even in a floodway piece of land, the one hundred year portion of a floodway, you could use that for some purposes. You're going to have limitations on, on elevation or, you know, filling in, that kind of thing, but, you know, sometimes you need parking, sometimes you need the stormwater feature that the whole site's kind of required could occupy the flood, the flood plain area. So when staff first looked at that, our, our goal is, well, we should maybe do some open space here, you know? We've kind of changed the terrain, if you will, the zoning terrain in a, in a big area of this part of town, but it'd be nice to hang on to some open space. And then further, further conversations with the applicant who was requesting just M one, it's like, well, what about, can we find, compromise of just the area that's most developable? Could we just live with that being the M one and the rest of it open space? So that, that was the staff recommendation going to the planning board. So we went to the planning board, and the planning board went to review that, and I think it was February second, I'm glad. They were aware of the other work being done in the whole area surrounding that property. There's very little conversation at the planning board meeting, and they voted to recommend approval for the M one, the whole thing. So I'm here to just say, we have, we, there's a, there's a plausible option in front of you to have, to hold on to some open space and, and, and to maybe have some areas that are most developable be held on to for manufacturing. And I will say this, if Mr. Wilson's here, maybe Alicia will speak to this, but he's been really interested in, in trail system. So his, his sense is, or what he's expressed is, he's, he's willing to work on trail system through the floodway, the flood fringe area, regardless of what the zoning is, but he wants to work on that anyway. So, you know, we're not, we don't have a plan, we haven't studied that yet, we're, we're not, we're maybe years away from having that in front of us, but, you know, he's, he's mentioned a commitment to try to do something more down here on behalf of open space and trail. So, you know, I guess in summary, the flood plain will control regardless of what the zoning is, but we have other areas of the city where we have open space zoning in place. So that's been the staff kind of position, it's our way to, you know, kind of send a message about this is what we're, what's important to this community, is having a balanced amount of open space. Recognizing all of the need we have for manufacturing, that's, you know, that's one of our pillars, right? But we're saying, you know, there's, there's an opportunity to do something just a little different, or a very small portion of the, about a hundred eighty acres that were just turned into the manufacturing zone over the last few months.
And just so I'm clear, open space you can use for retention, for water and parking?
Yeah, you can do both of those.
Okay.
Just a point first, you can't impede it, so if you go out there and create a bowl for retention...
Got you.
You're actually impeding the floodway, but you can use other devices.
I was referring to the area that, when it's...
Correct, you cannot mill a stormwater pond in that area.
I see.
But you can do other stormwater vehicles.
Now, go back to the, go back to the, the bigger picture, where you've been doing this, go back to the, go back to the slides that shows the whole area. You know, my, my concern is, we've got M one everywhere around it...
Yeah.
And then you've got some county here, and if you go back now to your, the picture that we're just looking at, you see right here, you didn't have anything done here...
Yeah.
And that's flood plain. I mean, it doesn't matter, there's only so much that, I don't care who the owner is, there's only so much that can be done there. Whether you call it M one, open space for flood plain, that's the only part that can be used. So I would, instead of having two different things there, I mean, I don't have a problem with getting M one. That right there is the only part that can be used. And this is open spaces anyhow, all that, the flood plain is open.
I think, I think it always, I'm putting another specification there, you're just creating a, we're creating something that'll need to be corrected. It needs to be, it'll need to be corrected.
I tend to, we didn't do what you did, I see you did that, that didn't, there's anywhere else.
You had a further, you had a further frame though. But it was not in that, it is...
If I got it on the map, well, it's a little off that map, I'm afraid. This was just a reminder, you know, what happened with the... This was just a reminder, you know, what happened with the other work, you know, there's all these old maps for that action that resell that portion in front. And this, you see a little open space in this one. Um, kind of areas this way, this is, uh, you know, uh, the end day of the multi-fission park and there's open space here.
That's what it's.
We kind of utilize it everywhere, you know, we, the Law Creek Greenway is, is, uh, it might be Z residential, but we have some, we have a quarter started. I guess that would be the point. We have a quarter started. Is there some things we could do to kind of enhance that and reinforce what that future's going to be? Now, I will say this, I, I wanted to show you one other thing before I close. This is, this is from the land development plan. This is the two thousand three plan, okay? So when we're adjusting the map, we always have to go back and say, well, what does the land development plan say, right? Because that was the regulating document to master, you know, look loosely, the master plan of the city back in two thousand, adopted in two thousand three. We know we're working on it again now. But this is, you know, here's our area here, this is, um, you know, the Walmart would be there, there's Tri-City, and here's Smith Field. And so this area was really focused on, this was multifamily and this was single family, and then this is sort of that, that open space. So this is kind of, you know, we're, we're adjusting this. If, if the action, uh, that Mr. Wells and the Law Creek Preserve folks would like to have, see how, we are adjusting that. So I made some amendments to that in, in the motions that followed this, uh, you know, this, their staff report and, um, you know, what, what that does is does adjust the map. We're recognizing that this map is a, is a helpful document and, and, you know, we're either sticking with it or we're changing it.
And one other point to note, uh, where you have open spaces, where you have a plan that you know is going to happen with that property. You already have either a site plan or some other type of approval. So you know how that site's going to develop. And you do have that on this case here. You already have a conditional district in place. You have a site plan that you approved. And so now you're just being consistent with your prior property that you've added open space to. You know how it's going to develop, so you're not impacting that potential development. And you get a site plan for the remainder of this area. I would recommend that as part of that condition, when it comes in, because it'll be a large structure and it'll get conditions placed on it, you can add the O S there.
That's a little, yeah, that's a good point. Mr. Wells is serious, I think he is, but he was bringing along, uh, law to connect with our greenway already.
Yeah.
Uh, you need that open space for, through there, and this is perfect time to completely tie that up right there behind Smith line.
Just want to, could you go back to the slide that shows the floodplain?
There you go. Yes, sir.
I understand the land board has recommended manufacturing. What are you recommending?
You know what? I'd like to see the original proposal. I, I think the original proposal for the city was, let's do open space here, okay? But through that process of like, okay, more discussion, spend a little more time with Mr. Wells and Alicia, I'd like to see us, um, okay, let's, let's give a little bit of both directions. Do the manufacturing where you can use the land and, and set a, set a reserve for a smoking space. That would be something that I recommend, you know, and so.
Are, are you suggesting go open space to follow the floodplain?
Yeah, we would follow the, basically the floodplain map. And, and you can see where on the other side of this line, which is really same owner, this line at some point will go away. I mean, it kind of ties in and you could use it this way, if I, you know, it's all worked together. It's, it looks like a little sliver now, but it, 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 a large piece of land is kind of.
That's the idea.
Floodplain's going to be open space. Floodplain can never be built on basically. So if we do it just like the rest of it, make it M one, we never get what can be used and what can't be used.
This is a public hearing. Uh, and we'd love to hear from the public on this particular item, which is considered only a amendment to Law Creek Preserve. If you're here to speak with me after of this particular item, uh, we'd love to hear from you. If you would just come forward and state your name and address of the public record, please. Anybody here tonight? Say go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Willfong, from the House of Law Creek Preserve. Um, the fourteen acres is surrounded by manufacturing M one. And I understand what you're saying about open space. And to speak what, uh, Mr. Glimes was saying, he has been and is very proactive and involved in, um, the trail system. But in our group, within the past year, we acquired seven hundred acres for our system in Kalamata County. He wants to continue with that, um, and as far as, you know, the best way to do that is to have a plan in place and it may be more progressive than you realize is this area too. You have a trail system that is already started, you know, on the upper end and following that through. Um, there are trail planners that are looking at this area. So the, the, um, to make it open space or not, to, to not make it open space, does not take out, um, the option of there being more open area for the public around here. Not from the manufacturing, same point, but the being surrounded, it makes the most sense for this fourteen acres to finish with, it would be a hundred and fifty-six acres total that's in one minute. So there's one forty-two now, this fourteen would complete that. It makes, you know, the most sense to continue on that. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak with that? With this item? Let me close the public hearing. Uh, we've got a motion to close the public hearing, thank you just for being able to say. Uh, second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion has to hear. Now we're up to audit ordinance seventeen twenty-one, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, um. Thank you for calling, Alicia. If, uh, the, the motions that were provided in the staff report and the consistency statement that were provided in the ordinance were based on if, if the M one was the motion made for the entire site. Now, if, if there's something else, like, uh, some adjustment to areas that aren't in the floodplain or M one and the other areas, we will make a small adjustment to that and I might have to allow, uh, Mr. Panel to help with that, uh, adjustment, make sure we get it right. But he's provided some, uh, some draft ones here, uh, a little under pressure just from that little moment of time, but he's provided something that we could work with.
And what you were saying, you talked about the, what you were mentioning, following the floodplain and making all that, okay.
Right, so if, if decisions made to, um, adjust it from what's been provided, we can accommodate that, but I was just making sure we can figure out what to do.
I'm looking to turn the result of the request for order twenty-one oh one as shown on the exhibit map of Kalamata County Single Family, R twenty, Concydia County, Gemma Manufacturing. And the adjustment to the land development plan showed areas manufacturing use because there is a need for growth in manufacturing sector and also find that your request is reasonable and is in the public interest because there is undue allowance expansion to manufacturing facilities and in several sign improvements. The site has sufficient infrastructure and is supposed to interstate with the voice program.
Well, thank you, Mr. Campbell. That's a motion to make, uh, all of that area an M one. Uh, do we have a second? You have a second, Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Uh, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, please. All oppose? Okay. That, that, that motion is not carried.
Motion, tell them.
I would like to make a motion that we follow the floodplain line and allow this area to be zoned M one. And, and just panel, you'll have to help me with the wording on that.
Yeah, I think the way we can do this.
Put the rest of this be, be zoned open space.
Yeah. Mr. Havens, I think the way you do this is for the area that's under consideration tonight, with the area that's in the floodplain or the floodway, be zoned open space and the balance be zoned M one.
Perfect.
So my motion is the area that is in the floodplain be zoned open space.
Floodplain and floodway.
Floodplain and floodway to be zoned open space and the balance M one.
Sound pleasant. That sounds like a good compromise to me. I'll stick with that. Uh, at this time, all the favors of that motion. Say aye.
Yeah, aye.
Raise your hand. Any oppose? Motion has to hear. Thanks, I appreciate that, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So we, we, we strike this board, you know, we'll, okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Appreciate, uh, appreciate that. You're, you're, you're not all the council, appreciate that. Okay, item, uh, uh, number nine is Ms. Brink. City office.
Thank you, Mayor Council, please. I'm here tonight, in front of you, your audit report. The fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Council has three pages given out. Now I'll be pointing over, it is a very short summary of a long audit report. If you remember from years past, you're required in the governmental accounting standards to report to you the assets, liabilities, revenues, expenditures of two different bases of accounting. You're required to report it to your full accrual, which is more akin to what we use, um, in our businesses. And we're also required to report it to you in the modified accrual, which looks very much like your budget. The, the first page is under the, under the full accrual method. Um, we'll get it out of the way first, since it doesn't look very much like your budget. Uh, you end of the year with assets in different outlooks and your governmental activities of fifty-one million, liabilities of seven million, for net assets of forty-three million, which is an increase of about a million from the previous fiscal year. In your business top activities, which is your water and sewer fund, you end of the year with thirty-seven million in, in assets, almost four million in liabilities, but net assets of thirty-three million. And that is an increase from thirty-two six of the previous year. The bottom half of page one handles you, um, how much it costs to run the government and where you raised the revenue to pay the bills. For your governmental activities, you spent a little over ten million running the government. You paid for that with charges for services of eight hundred thousand, operating grants and contributions of over five hundred thousands, property taxes leveled of six million, local option sales taxes of over three million, other taxes of eight hundred thousand, um, investment interest earnings of one hundred and seventeen, miscellaneous revenues of sixty-three thousand. You had a gain on the sale of some capital assets of twenty-four thousand and you had transfers out of twenty, of twenty thousand, leaving you, um, a net, excuse me, of eleven million, seven hundred thousand for an increase in net assets of one point two million in your governmental activities. That increased your net asset total from forty-two million to forty-three million. The second column in the middle of the page reports to your business top activities. Again, your water and sewer fund. You spent four and a half million paying the bills there. You paid for that with five million in charges for services, another eighty-seven thousand in grants, forty-seven thousand in interest income and a transfer of twenty thousand for a total of five point two million. Your change in net, your change in net assets at your business top funds were seven hundred and eighty thousand, which increased your net assets from thirty-two billion, six to thirty-three billion four. And the second page looks more like what you're used to working with. As it's all the budget, the modified accrual method, which looks very much like your budget. Um, so these are summaries out of your audit report. A lot of numbers added together to make it, I, but hopefully you'll get the points across. I haven't had this scheduled in the past, but I wanted to bring this to your kitchen this year especially. Um, I wanted you to see what your ending budget was, what you actually spent and that you had, um, a very successful year in a very hard environment of controlling your expenses. So you can see our revenues that we actually brought in, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand more than we invested, which is good. And the expenses on this, on this are presented to you by function. You budgeted a general government, three point six billion. You actually spent three point two million. So your general government expenses, you're actually four hundred thousand under budget at the end of the year. Public safety, you budgeted four point seven million. You spent four million. You came in under budget and public safety by seven hundred thousand. Transportation, you budgeted one point four million. Spent one point two million. Again, you came in under budget, about two hundred thousand. Environmental protection, you budgeted nine hundred thousand. Spent almost eight hundred thousand. You came in under budget, five hundred and thirty, five thousand. Other financing sources and uses are transfers in and out, so they, they usually come in right on budget. Um, so at the end, your total expenditures in your governmental fund came in under budget, a hundred, I'm sorry, one million, four hundred thousand. You had an increase in fund balance in your governmental, in your general fund, excuse me, of eight hundred and thirty, eight thousand. Just wanted to bring that to your attention because I thought that was probably more, more in this, in this environment. Water sewer ended the same, year with the same success. Um, you actually brought, brought in revenues in excess of your expenditure, in excess of budget revenues, over a hundred thousand. You budgeted operating expenditures for four million. You spent three point two million. Operating expenditures came in under budget by a hundred thousand. Of course, debt and principal, debt principal payments are usually right on the money. Um, and transfers, we usually don't have a lot of variance in that. But overall, we water sewer came in five hundred and seventy-six thousand under budget. And your, this is not your increase of fund balance, but your increase of revenues and other financing sources, other expenditures and other financing uses was six hundred and ninety-six thousand. That, that is water sewer operating fund only. That does not include any water sewer capital projects. We add all that together, then the, the net asset increase changes. Got any questions or comments about that page? That's a good page. And the last page is just, um, segment type information to give you just some bullet points of where you did this year compared to what you did last year. Um, in, in water sewer, you can see that your revenues increased over the year from four point seven million to five million. Depreciation expenses, another, I always like to point out, that is a non-cash flow item for that year, but it does tell you how your, um, equipment, infrastructure and buildings are, are being spent over time. Um, and, and they're, they're going to be replaced at some point. Your operating income in water sewer was six hundred and twenty-three thousand compared to three hundred and twenty-three thousand in prior year. Uh, then I put some bullets in here that you can look at where your debt balances are at the end of the year and where your debt's going as, as it is coming down. Um, and then also we talked about the addition to, um, planting, doggy fixed assets to your equipment. Uh, this year we didn't add as much as we did in prior years, but we did add. Uh, total equity in your water sewer still increased, even though it was a tough year, from thirty-two million, six to thirty-three million four. I think the next section of information is probably what makes the most sense to most of us and what I've asked the, is the most of any other question. Did we end the year with more or less money than we had in previous fiscal year? Um, you, you began the year with total, um, investments in cash in both governmental funds and water sewer of fourteen point four million. You end of the year with sixteen point six million. You had a cash increase of two point one million. Um, and then the section of the revenues, we're always interested in knowing what our. And then the section of the revenues, we're always interested to know what our annual percent collected rate is. Your percent collection rate, you can't get much better when you're in the 98, 99. And it doesn't much matter if it goes up or down, it's an amazing rate. And then you can also see how your annual sales taxes collective jumped from $9 million to $3 million. Investment earnings were down this year, only in your unit than in every unit that I've looked at, from $200,000 to $164,000. And you received federal and state funds, local assistance programs, $417,000. And last on the page, we always want to know what our fund balance did, if it increased or decreased in our governmental funds. Your fund balance did increase in all your governmental funds from $0.4 million to $10 million. Your undersigned fund balance, which is the amount of the fund balance you have not committed to use anywhere, had took a small, small decline from $5 million to $4.8 million. And then the general fund at the end of the year was the fund balance of an increase of almost $800,000. And there again, the undersigned fund balance is a little bit less than the previous year. And that's the end of the thing.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Any questions?
No, it's all within question for this one. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, I appreciate it.
This is, this was a fantastic report. Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. Duncan and Mr. Lipton, and really all the staff.
All the staff.
We had, we had one extra challenge a year, and it happens about a minute a year.
Yes.
And management, the staff regularly visit and serve, and we just didn't know how it actually ran into sales staff or anything. To have a report like this in a year, I have to, on behalf of our council, or have to roll the staff, thank you. Thanks for hearing me. We appreciate it.
And I do want to thank Vicky and Lori and all the other people in the county staff that helped us this together. And if they want to bring your, to your attention, this year for the first year since I've been here, I did not write the numbers in the words, or you don't have them, I didn't write them, Vicky did. And that was, that was a big task for her to undertake, and I was really pleased that she got through with the grace that she did.
Is that a new requirement?
Yes. For single audits, for any individuals got over a certain amount of federal state funds. And it, and it makes a lot of sense to me. We're not supposed to audit our own work.
Sure.
So it doesn't really, it really makes more sense for someone else to be writing it, and for us to be auditing it, and that's what it was supposed to be doing. So it took her a couple, we knew it was coming, so we worked in that direction for a couple of years, and then kind of released this year, and so she didn't have to be for talking. Thank you.
My dear, my dear, remind you, where's your office?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I'm just glad, but it's a wonderful, it's a good presentation. I'd better say hi.
I don't care.
I don't think, I think it is a contract through all city council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, exhibit 10 is the contract between the city of Conover and Everby Went CPA for the annual audit for fiscal year 2021, which we're working through right now for the amount of $17,500.
May I be approved of the contract?
Say it.
May I be prescribed, say, Mr. Olbrach? Is it in further discussion? Why must you get there? Mr. Lipton, how does this contract compare to prior contracts?
Last year was $17,000. And I think this is an amazing price, considering the fact that she knows that we're going to have some single audits this year coming out with, we're going to have the $9 million, the, the money for new fabrics, also that project, so we're going to have at least two single audits, projects. This year, this past year was just yellow book audit. We didn't have a single audit, and there's a lot more work involved in the audit process when you have a single audit. So another thing I would like to say about Ms. West, even though this is the, and I think I've said this before, even though this is what we pay her to do the audit, she's always available anytime when we do something new, or if we have a new GASB requirement that we don't quite understand, we can call on her anytime during the year, and she's always willing and able to help us work through it without charging us for it.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have a question in the second. Do you have a question? Oh, fair enough. Anybody close to that? Thank you, thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Item level is AD and Jurassic Plan. Adrian, appreciate it.
Good evening, thank you guys for having me tonight. So this is just, we're seeking adoption for the plan. I don't know if you remember my presentation from back in January, but we are done with the 30 day public comment period now, so I will keep tonight short and sweet as opposed to in January. Really, there's nothing up there, there's nothing that has changed with the plan, aside from what I'd already told you guys about. And that was the one mid block crossing I had suggested at Thornburg, and it was at Shuford Elementary School. And like I said, after I looked at that, I didn't really like the site distance, plus the speed limit on that road. So I took out that recommendation, but there is still a recommendation in that area just to update the crossing on concept of drive there at the school. So that's the only thing that has changed in the actual plan. Of course, there was a public comment period, or it was a 30 day comment window. I'm just going to read the comments that I received really quick to you, and I included them as an appendix in the back of the plan, in the back of the plan. One was to increase directional signage for restroom availability in municipal and public spaces. We received a comment about installing accessible spaces to sit or rest comfortably in public shaded areas. Add trash cans to Loud Creek Greenway and address erosion issues that are hazardous in, in the area close to Wild Haven Apartments. And then another, the last one that I thought was interesting was start recreational programs for persons with disabilities over the age of 18. So those were all that I received. And like I said, that's, that's the only updates I've made from the, made to the plan that you guys viewed in January. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, I look forward to this. Get out of the way. Thank you very much. Take a motion to accept this project plan presentation. Thank you, Miss Duncan. Section 15, home base sound. And, and thank you, appreciate you being here, doing what you're doing. Item 12 is Greenway Public Transportation. I believe we have here, Rockwell.
Yes, also Mr. Eric Kors from Greenway Public Transportation.
Thanks for having us. Good evening, Mayor, 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 City Council staff, and the public. My name is Eric Kors, I work for Greenway Public Transportation, with the big green bus that you see going down the road. We're here tonight to present to you a reroute plan, a proposal that we have worked with the public through to re, to reconsider the bus routes, like the US Census, which is taken every 10 years. And we'd like to make sure that our public service really does reflect the public. So we have done lots of surveys, we've gotten on board the bus. We've, we've talked to stakeholders like your manager, Mr. Duncan, who is on our, our Greenway Board, and, and really asked everyone, what can we do to make the bus service better? Where would you like to go? What would you like the service to be like? And after receiving over 100 surveys, we have come up with a proposal that we are re-presenting to the public in the hope that they will, that they will approve it. Sorry, I think I spoke a little fast, because I scrolled through my slides, so probably...
You said, you said a hundred surveys?
Yes, we got over 100 surveys from our community in Conover region.
So we didn't have slides, so it's kind of good that we don't have, because we do want to be reading, playing here in the hard hills playing tonight. It's kind of, you have full chat. I know, right now my time's cut in half. So I was trying to get a visual if we could at the, of mygreenway.org is the website for Greenway all the time. You scroll down to, there should be a bus logo on the main page, and click that bus logo with the green arrows. That's the logo for this initiative, and scroll down, and say, click here with the little asterisk, oh, this is going to be, just scroll down. So this is the kind of before and aftermath. One of the things we want to do with this initiative is also kind of clean up maps. The streets in the area, because they're rolling terrain, and sometimes they're on the diagonal, it's kind of confusing to people to learn all the streets, also numbers and quadrants too, right? So, but this is often what people are looking for, especially if they're newer to an area, and we're trying to make that more stylistic, and more like a subway style map. And so that's been helping, especially now that we're now back with another set of surveys, especially with riders that say, okay, if this were to change proposed system new, how would this work? And Courtney, do you mind going up to, right, click here link, interactive map? So we actually put on the webpage this interactive that kind of shows, now this is now the real geography, right? That was the stylistic, this is the real geography of the roads, that has all the routes as they are today and as they are in the future. And so it's not a side of this. So, but today, I don't know if you're aware, you have kind of various routes that come into the community largely from I-40, or from Reece Drive, Fourth Street, Southwest, Southwest Conover area. Those are the two ways they primarily approach the community. And they come in by the Conover Shopping Center today, off I-40 to County Home Road, they come through Five Points, and go to Old 16 down towards Newton, or they go from Fair Grove out to, I, I think we may abandon, I'm sorry, go back to just the graphic map. So, so yeah, so today you can kind of see what you have, the green in the red that come through town, and they overlap through Conover and Five Points. So if you scroll down, what we're proposing is based on the surveys we heard, and this is actually in the presentation, we had like those over 100 surveys, we heard emerging themes, and a lot of those requests were new areas. And they also said, make the ride shorter. And that's very important, because if you know, if you rode the bus today, it can take you almost an hour to go all the way from downtown Dupree to the Conover Walmart, or even to downtown Newton via Conover, that's just too long for folks to wind around. And so we want to try and make that faster. One way to make that faster is to utilize Highway 70 as a, a primary connection. Today, we're going all the way up to Tate Boulevard, then even all the way up to Springs Road before we come back down to Tate Boulevard. That doesn't make sense. That's why it takes so long. And so we had a lot of requests for folks in Conover in particular to add service to the Highway 70 corridor, that's somewhere that's not served today, and this would be adding that service. And so we are, though, there's a trade off. This is a cost neutral exercise. We want to not increase the cost to Conover or any other, any other partner, Dupree or even, or contribute to the system, but you want a bigger bang for the buck, a better return on that investment, better productivity. So we have riders shipping out, so it's also the presentation, and I think we could probably email that out afterwards, or, or this week.
We'll have some friends hearing that.
Oh, well, you found it?
It was included in all.
Oh, yes, you have it in your material as well. That we see, of course, there's areas today of high ridership and low ridership. Essentially, what we're trying to do is take out those low ridership areas and reinvest them into new areas that people want to request. Conover Shopping Center is one of those trade offs, and County Home Road. Those are the only two areas really in Conover that we're, we're recommending that the service you have today, you're new, but that is in order to add service to South Street Place Southwest, South Seventh, South Seventh Street Place Southwest, excuse me, and also Conover Boulevard East, Highway 70, or West, Conover Boulevard West. Those two areas were the top two requested areas in Conover that would gain service by no longer going to Conover Shopping Center. So that's, and that's shown in proposal. And like I said, we're back out in the community now getting that feedback, but we're also here if we present it to other state councils too, just to really have that discussion. I do think also tonight there is an actual item for Greenway Public Transportation to appoint an alternate. Mr. Duncan serves as primary representative to the board directors, but also for this item, they're seeking a new representative to replace the retired public.
Right.
But do you have any taking questions?
We appreciate that you guys are always trying to evolve, that's what, what it takes. I, I just have a couple of questions, I'm curious, do you, do you see with COVID situation, ridership down, same?
In April, May, in April, May especially, and even a little bit in June, it was, it was down, way down. Because just like you or me, if you were not traveling, nobody, nobody was traveling, we were doing what, you know, trying to stay at home. But since then, it has recovered. Now, for, out of safety precautions, they are not collecting fares.
Right.
But if you...
It's free to get on board currently until further notice, because that's pretty standard in transit across the country, and have to avoid the person-to-person contact of...
Do we have that on our website?
No, we're not advertising it, actually. A lot of our riders love it.
I'm serious, you're, you're already doing the route.
Right.
I go, you know, it's a great time for our citizens to get used to it, it's, you know, it's...
Right, yeah. And we do free travel training, so that's a, that's a, actually a federally funded program through the 5310 grant, where we can get on more people, especially people with disabilities or the seniors, and they ride with them for free for the first time. And your, your brave city manager, Mr. Duncan, I could brag on him for a second, he's our vice territory board, and he's such an active member, and every time he sees someone at city hall who looks a little bit lost, and they figure out the bus route, he gives us a call, and we make sure that they get in touch with us, and so we try to, try to make sure that everyone gets their call.
And then the, the other side of what you guys do on the individual rides to seniors stopping points, or anything like that.
Convenience.
I personally have exposure to that with my parents, and they don't want the job, thank you for that.
You said that ridership is, is backed up. How, how does, how did the numbers compare pre-COVID?
It's still lower than pre-COVID. And you can always see the seasonal, it's always better when the weather's better. Like this week should be really good.
Yeah.
What came up with the color coding?
It's, it's adjustable, and so if you...
No, I mean, who's idea?
Well, it's based on the existing colors, but there are two new routes that they can become something different, but because we're touching the whole thing, doesn't mean just because it's now red and green in Conover, Newton, that it has to stay red and green.
So it's a great idea, I like what you've done.
So that was actually a feedback, well, that was actually a feedback we got from the public, is we used to have, or we still have actually maps that are, that are quite as, as figurative, and there was feedbacks from the public that why can't it be more like, like a big city on, like a metro train station where you count the number of stops, and it's, you can see a little more clear, there's less geography.
So there's a back on the bus, right? Right, excluding one of the ones.
Yes, although, like I said, they're not playing here, they ask you to enter on the back away from the driver, and they have spacing, the seats, like every other seat or so is rotted off or ticked off to keep people apart.
Right.
So, so if I want to go from downtown Conover to downtown Newton, I take the green bus and change the mobility?
Yes, you can change at the time of Billis there, where you know Goodwill has that retail store at the D and B, but, or you could also go to Hickory Walmarts. If you didn't want to, you know, cross Highway 70, the Hickory Walmart stop, if you just ride a little bit further into Hickory, there's the same stop is served by all routes, and kind of shelter.
And Mayor, members of council, this is something we've been struggling with since I, I was on the board 15 years now, before it was free plan. And we challenged John Tippett to fix this, and he couldn't fix it. And these two gentlemen have come in in about a, about a year and a half time, and got it more modernized, easy to read, hopefully will be continued to refine it, you know, and I mean, Munro and I were just talking, you could go to Europe, you're going to speak the language, and get around on the mass transit system. You know, I, I went to Boston several years ago, didn't know where I was going, and then one day, I went to the entire transit system to get anywhere in the metro area there, which is four times the size of Charlotte. But, you know, it's just, I, I really need to brag on them and everything they've done to bring this about. to bring this about. And it's going to continue to refine and improve our public transit system, let them break down. Yeah. And, and to Mr. Mark's credit, he was the only other person that was interested in training here at the city, and so he and I was working on that for years and we're glad to see it finished finally.
Thank you. And we have, we have someone to appoint, Mr. Duncan?
I'm going to recommend Ms. Kennedy because she's had a little bit of transit exposure in Valleys. When they, we have a grant system there that Greenway runs, based between Morganton and Valleys, and, because nobody else wants to do it. It's incredibly boring. And the second thing is, is learning a new language. When you sit down in a transit booth, it's a whole, it's a whole new language, all new set of acronyms, all new budget, all new funding. They need to do budgets the way we do it. So give it to the new person. That's what my recommendation is.
Check both of the documents there.
Great, great job selling this, Courtney. I made the recommendation that we appoint Courtney Kennedy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duncan, thank you, Mr. Ackert, and Secretary Report as well. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Anybody else? Keep up the good work, guys.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
Keep, keep stretching away. I'm thirteen, love it. Mr. Duncan?
Mayor, Member of Council, on Green, we have a next move. You know, we'd like to do a public private partnership. We have another opportunity for a public private partnership conversation with the recruiting family. They have approached us about purchasing the corn lawn here at Fifth and conversation southeast. They signed a letter of intent where they intend to build a venue that would house an opportunity for meeting spaces, people to gather, have an adult beverage, and also a brewery on site. It would also include an opportunity for food trucks to plug into the building, so you can have the generators and be serviced there and have a caterer's kitchen. We've often envisioned having a more social event on this location. We cater a lot to children and the youth, and then we started to our senior adults. And so now we want to encompass the rest of the adult population and say, hey, come here, have a good time, invite them to adult beverage, don't be too excited, have a good time. And so I, I look forward to bringing you the remainder of this project. We've seen some early sketches. Alan and I are going to help refine that and bring you a wonderful project, and the rest of the staff has been made aware as well. So tonight, basically what you're doing is agreeing to get engaged and do another public private partnership. The city would sell the property and then reinvest those proceeds back into additional assets to put in parking elsewhere on the site.
Why doesn't it pay for the property?
Ten thousand dollars, I believe, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's going for the future part.
Yeah, I think it's in the.
It's in the letter of intent.
It's in here, yes.
So ten, ten thousand dollars for a sixty thousand dollar piece of property?
Well, you could probably sell it for that if you wanted to, but would you have anyone to buy? And would you have anybody to do the project as you want? That's kind of what we've been able to do, is we've been able to negotiate for a desirable project and using a quality piece of property with a low purchase price. That we've done that.
His investment, I know his ballpark now, but his prior investment on the other portion of the property was initially in a little over four and a half million, he's now invested in excess of eight million on the site. In exchange for that, he also, he received the property from us in exchange for a new street, additional parking, and water and sewer installation, dentistry. Been a great success, we've been able to recruit the rest right there to the city and help with small businesses. So I, I look forward to the same amount of success here. I think you're looking at a project, just guessing, probably two to two and a half million by the time you do all the equipment and everything. So it could be a good return on those. Might not be the high, depends, depends on the total square feet. The lot is much smaller than what we thought, because GIS is very wrong on it. We were thinking it was almost nine thousand square feet. Our staff and his staff managed it to both come up around sixty-seven hundred square feet. So that does, there's less there than we thought.
We approve the letter of intent.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
I'll add this to council, he is actively spending architecture and street money and has met with potential contractors, so he's pursuing the project post-able.
Thank you. Nice, nice work, staff. I really appreciate that. Appreciate Mr. Sheen's continued partnership with the city. You've been good to us. All voters say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Both, carry. Thank you. Item fourteen is ordinance eighteen twenty-one. Mr. Duncan?
Ordinance eighteen twenty-one, and two thousand twenty twenty-one budget ordinance with a thousand dollar grant from the North Carolina Firefighters Burn Children's Fund to the Culver Fire Department, and this is to be used to purchase a hundred and fifty-five smudge alarms and one hearing impaired smudge alarm.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any questions?
Mayor, Council, we just received a thank you letter for some new citizens that just moved into the area and the fire department is able to assist them with installation smudge alarms through the fire drain, and that is very thankful about what a wonderful thing that the community does.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all you guys.
Sir.
Any questions? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, we all voters say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carry. Thank you. Item fifteen is nineteen, ordinance nineteen twenty-one, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, our fire department's been out looking for money. Ordinance nineteen twenty-one, amounts to twenty twenty-one budget ordinance to provide for assistance to firefighters' grant in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, with a city match of only a hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. That will be from general fund balance appropriation, and this will be to purchase COVID mitigation supplies, surgical masks, N-95 masks, and medical grade gloves, totaling three thousand dollars.
Well, Chief, thanks. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, everybody. All voters say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it, sir. Item fifteen eight is our object, our resolution three eight twenty-one, Mr. Duncan?
Mayor, Member of Council, we also have a guest who's tonight. Nathan, you got the meeting, a primary meeting, this operating manager of Project Grapple. We still have, you can tell by name, even though we all know what it is. We've had, continued to meet with Project Grapple and developed a project and we're kind of, the neighbors are also very involved. Since you last heard about this project, they've had an additional twelve acres of land. They bought the corner there at Thornburg, we manual. So this is going to be one heck of a camp if we're not finished. We met earlier this week, we're in construction, so I believe we'll be selected. We straightened the contract for this project in local. We also mentioned the architect. Project's moving along at a very brisk pace. One of the things we're asking you to do tonight is the previous resolution is part of the application that goes into the DOT Board of Transportation. If we're able to get that into them tomorrow morning, we can make the deadline for their April board meeting, their March board meeting, the big deal tonight, if one of our officials is not here.
Great.
I'll try to answer any questions. We have received a commitment for five hundred and twenty-three thousand from Golden Lake and four hundred thousand from the DOT to complete the road from GKN to Central Dallas Port all the way through to South Mac.
And that'll, that'll complete, will that take care of it?
That should take care of it. We're asking the county to also participate with us in the low interest loan and partial grants to extend the water line loop through there. Project Grapple is a metal fabricating company, so water is not important. In fact, you don't want to put water on a metal tire, but we would need water to service the rest of the development.
He's already out there filling in dirt.
It's active, active site, yes, sir.
Will we approve resolution three dash twenty-one?
Thank y'all for taking that up as a non-则.
Second. Thank you, Senator, Mr. Phil.
If you have a question, the company, Nathan, or anybody you want to.
I think you covered the well, but if you have any questions, I would happy to answer them. I appreciate you being here, I made, thank you very much for the interest. We're excited, guys. We were very excited.
And Captain, let's say this, the first phase we had talked about was the forty thousand square foot addition. Now it's now looking like that's going to be a hundred thousand.
Hundred eight.
Hundred eight.
Hundred eight thousand square feet.
So you'll probably be back, and I would say maybe in the planning board in April, possibly May, and then the council the month after that for a condition visit for that whole site.
Mr. Duncan, I'd like to take a tour at some point.
Now that we're getting kind of on the backside of COVID and y'all getting vaccinated, I think it would be a good opportunity to the way that we're, what this guy's saying.
I drive by some time today, you're going to need more parking here for us, so.
We need a lot.
All voters say aye?
Aye.
Much, has carried. Thank you. Item sixteen is our committee report. Mr. Council, if anything you left for, you can all, Council, most we've, most of your probably just filed, not the city manager.
I, last Thursday, I was, I was involved in about a day-long Zoom meeting with the municipal board of the league municipalities, where we set the rates for various insurance that the league offers, and rates are going to be increased in the coming year. Reasonable rates, I hope. But.
Is that for property liability and workforce comp?
Yeah. Yeah. There's been a, a large number of COVID claims throughout the state, and.
Now, we don't have our health insurance with them.
Right.
But our workers, Tom.
And the, the latest recommendation from the state board elections to move municipal elections to next year, it looks like, according to the lead, that that's probably not going to affect those municipalities where redistricting is not an issue. Those that are, where it is an issue, that may still get moved to the coming year, like say, you create statesful, those areas, but should not affect Culver, Newton, any of our areas, according to the lead.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor, just to give you your information right now, Mark and I and Mr. Duncan met with some people from the Lions Day last week, and we will report that piggyback way to see if we have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you doing it. Nice gift, isn't it?
Electric dollar, I was just paid in the league virtual meeting. What was that virtual town hall kind of meeting on? On some time last week? It was pretty, pretty important. It was in a small breakout session. But I said it first. A few drunkards of news, and it was a very small round, and Anthony Spence was talking. We had his ears. Pretty good. But I asked him a lot of questions, which he didn't help.
Imagine that.
What is it, your head has a bad sex, carry? I'll be back.
Yeah.
Mr. Duncan, city manager.
Mayor, Member of Council, I continue to brag on this staff, you touched on it earlier with the audit. And I think I've been doing this, well, nineteen plus years now, the best audit report I've ever seen, especially given the situation with the pandemic. And a huge credit to the staff, especially Mr. Duncan, never explained to you the difficulties with it all this year, it's changed a lot, requirements have changed, and they did a fantastic job where they put you just that. They really was the department head, but he kept everything aligned. I just made the orders, they don't want to have to carry that, so we'll be ready. We had some very good luck this past week with the drill assembly. Our nominee on appropriations got modified, it's a direct state appropriation, so the federal regulations that we had to comply with, all that is done away with by a stroke of pen, and it was a big deal because it's the largest appropriation that the municipality in the last few years in the state. And it's, that's pretty impressive. They also allowed me to speak to the appropriations committee, I didn't know that I was on the phone with them. Jay called me up in the middle of the day and says, explain to me what you want to do in this bill. I thought I was on the phone with Jay, and then he said, Jason Sane said you're, he's chairman of appropriations. And then they explained to me, I forgot on the phone, that I was talking to the entire appropriations committee for the sideboard come up, and was on the phone a lot, and so I, and they did tell me that at the beginning, so it's kind of me. And so we're able to take the funding and remove the restrictions of the line items. And then we have nine million dollars that we can spend on that project and move it around. So if something comes in under one line item, we can spend more of the year's maximum flexibility against minor restrictions. Well, it took a, a year to get all that pregnant out, but it worked, so it's been, it's been a very big week for us.
The time crunch, guys.
And our time crunch.
Yeah, we have a December thirty-first deadline, and so we have a self-encoded one of March one, twenty twenty-three myself. We do have a fund revert deadline, there's, there's term on it for, I think it's July one of twenty twenty-two, so we'll, we'll make that deadline. Answer any questions you may have, but it's, it's been a busy week, you think it's going to be a busy? So when, when are the big bids coming out? We should proceed bids next to that, real far. We had eight bidders bid yesterday for a pretty good meeting, lots of good questions. So I expect to have some good numbers for you. And then you'll be approving this contract if everything goes well at your April meeting and we'll be off the rails.
Everybody, about seventeen, we'll catch up session.
We're going to start a work session at five thirty, kind of hit y'all out in an hour and a half if possible, just to give you an idea of all the stuff that's happening right now. And every day there's more and more projects come in. The, the point of the meeting is to tell you that it's incredibly intense right now on your staff, hours are limited, and the economy is exploding here. I, I really don't know what we're going to do. I think the main thing you should understand is that it's, ten years ago, we had to go out and hunt projects and hunt funding and keep the economy going smoothly. Now it's, it's rolling in the door and we're having to filter and slow projects down so we can get other projects ahead and get stuff moving. It's very good right now. Good for sure, the economy.
Build a journey, man, build a little jump.
That's right.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll have to turn it on.